Good morning and welcome back to the Select Committee on Victoria Planning Provisions Amendments, VC 257, 267 and 274. Before we get... This is to introduce themselves, I'll just provide some advice. All evidence that is taken today is protected by parliamentary privilege as provided by the Constitution Act 1975 and provisions of the Legislative Council Standing Orders. Therefore, the information you provide during the hearing is protected by law. You are protected against any action for what you say during this hearing, but if you go elsewhere and repeat the same things, those comments may not be protected by this privilege. Any deliberately false evidence or misleading of the committee may be considered a contempt of Parliament. All evidence is being recorded and you will be provided with a proof version of the transcript following the hearing. Transcripts will ultimately be made public and posted on the committee's website. Could I welcome you today and thank you for attending on what I know was very short notice? For the hands-off record, can you please state your name and the organisations that you are appearing on behalf of? And we might start real fast.
I'm Dan McKenna, CEO of Housing All Australians.
My name's Rob Praddlin, Executive Director of Housing All Australians.
Jonathan O'Brien, Lead Organizer, YMB Melbourne.
Ethan Gilbert, Co-Lead Organizer of YMB Melbourne.
Terrific. Welcome, it's lovely to have you with us here today. We might just start out if you could do maybe 10 minutes maximum, just some opening comments, who'd like to kick off first?
I'll kick off.
Thank you, Robert.
And thank you for the opportunity to come and present to the committee. And so my name's Robert Praddlin, Executive Director of Housing All Australians, and Housing All Australians for the committee's benefit is a private sector initiative, looking at housing and homelessness through an economic lens. Because the private sector's voice has been missing in this whole discussion about Australia's housing context. And we support the amendments for one very simple reason, which we can come back to, is about time.
About what, sir?
Time.
Time.
Time, and I'll come back to that. But let me give you a bit of a context of where we're coming from, because we are now a national organisation. And when I speak publicly about this issue that I've learnt over my career as a property developer, I am a capitalist. But just because I'm a capitalist, that doesn't mean I don't care about the vulnerability of our people and homelessness, which is all part of a housing continuum problem. If we go back to the Morrison government when they did a review of NIFIC, which is now called Housing Australia, they quantify the short... The actual long-term cost of this as $290 billion over the next 20 years, just in social and affordable housing. That is building 44,500 homes every year for 20 years, starting from 2021. HAF is trying to do 11,000 per year for a five-year period. Where's the other 33,000 going to come from? And a significant portion of those is in Victoria. And it's simply about supply, it's not rocket science. And I've been involved with my career, I've dealt with some of the people across the table, I know how the system works, I understand politics, we are agnostic politically, but we understand there's a process and there's a whole range of community views about this. And everyone's view is valid. The issue that's in front of the committee is you've got to listen to all the people that are preparing, because you need to inform yourself about what you didn't know. The same thing is what happened to me when I first learnt that, and I say this publicly, when I'm there selling apartments, housing and land, when I was General Manager of Australand, which became Fraser's Property Australia, I assumed, like most Australians, that our governments were looking after our vulnerable people. And I discovered that they weren't. And I'm in the industry. This has been developed over the last 30 to 40 years. And it's going to take 30 to 40 years to fix it if we are all serious about it. And everyone's got the right intention, in fact, the lady that spoke before, Joan, she said, "This is an issue, we need to do this, but there's a problem with the process." Well, the issue is, if we had to start today, let's say we all agreed to provide new housing supply, it's going to take five years to get an additional house on the market because of the process. And what's happened? We've allowed homelessness, which is the canary in the coal mine, to a much broader issue in the whole housing continuum, which ends up with essential workers not finding accommodation where society needs them to service. So it's a continuum issue. And unless we can do that at scale, our grandkids are already stuffed because of the house prices. We are polarising society, and I'll tell you now, we are heading at some point for civil unrest, just like it's happening in Europe. So Housing All Australians was formed of the fact that, to be honest, I've spoken to many governments, many ministers, same planning portfolio or same housing portfolio but different person, and every time you have to re-educate. Because to be fair to you, I've spent my whole life in property, and you've been asked by Parliament to come back with recommendations to guide the next future. And doing that, there are compromises to be made within society. That is part of your job to inform Parliament, based on all the evidence we've heard of what we've learnt through this process. This is what we think is the best interest of all Victorians, not just anyone, including us. And that is the task, is to learn and ask questions. So we are here to be that vessel, to ask the questions. I've had the unique opportunity to work in the private sector, to understand we are heading, and it's just so clear, of the freight train, and we started to... I started discussing this over 10 years ago. It's so obvious if you're in the industry. But you've got to bring people on the journey, because it's not an easy thing to solve. The ecosystem is so broad, we're talking about planning, there are many more obstacles, including some of the stuff we heard yesterday about tax, it's a whole range of things. But unless we start to put the framework of future generations, we're never going to solve it. And should this current government change at the next election, you're starting from scratch. In some ways, whatever comes out of this committee meeting sets the framework for whatever the next government may be, because we have to continue doing housing supply. So in some ways, from an opposition self-interest, something that comes out of this should set the framework for doing something when you get into power, otherwise we're starting again. Because I have discussed the same issue when the Labor Party was in opposition, and the same arguments were said at then. It's taken 11 years for them to realise we're in a housing crisis. My concern is a concerned Australian and Victorian. Whichever government comes into power next, how long we have to wait again? And this is getting worse incrementally, because we're allowing things to become normalised. And that is a danger for future society. So look, we are here to offer as a sounding board, being a property developer, a compassionate capitalist, we call ourselves now, that understands the public policy we are all trying to achieve, and everybody has well-meaning intentions. How do we come up with a conclusion from a committee to inform Parliament about what the best way forward is on a bipartisan basis, as best you can? Because I get this politics. So we are here to answer questions, and subsequent to this, and Dan will answer any detailed questions, but that's all I've got to say as an intro. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Jonathan, please.
Thank you, committee members, for having us here. So, the housing crisis is a housing shortage. For decades, we have failed to build enough homes across Victoria, and especially in the most productive and sought-after places in our cities and settlements. The sum total of this has been to make us all poorer. Wealth increases sure is a function of house prices, but to what end? High house prices simply allow incumbent homeowners to sell their expensive houses and buy another expensive house. These high prices lock younger people out of the market. They consume our nation's earnings, displace our productivity and drive families further and further out of our cities, displacing agricultural and biodiverse land on our city's fringes for the sake of an endless horizon of suburban sprawl. Only now are we reversing course, only now are we reckoning with our past mistakes. If there is one thing to take away from our submission to this inquiry and our presentation today, it's that these reforms are not radical. The Planning Institute, yesterday, stated for all to hear that they would prefer conservatism. And certainly, these reforms are not conservative, but they are also not radical. As detailed in our submission, deemed to comply controls and third-party appeal exemptions are in operation across Victoria already. They operate more broadly in South Australia, Queensland and the ACT. In Western Australia, third-party appeals do not even exist as part of the planning system, and yet no cataclysm, as far as we know, has come to the folks out west. By national standards, Victoria has an outsized number of opportunities for third-party appeal. We detail this in our submission, and we detail the impacts of this in our submission. What Victoria doesn't have is an outsized number of homes for people to rent, buy and live in. Consider the National Construction Code, a far more important tool for ensuring health, safety and wellbeing of all Australians than any jurisdictional planning code could hope to be. The Construction Code is deemed to comply. It doesn't rely on third-party appeals by a small minority of noise-makers for its operation. A building's plans are submitted, those plans are safe, then the building can be built. After inspection, it can be lived in. The same is true for planning across many places across Australia and the world. If the homes comply, then they can be built, then they can be lived in. This is not radical. What is radical is that for decades, we have made it more and more difficult to build homes in this state, not just for the public sector, of the private sector, but for the public sector too. Homes Victoria, Development Victoria, community housing providers, all of these people fight the planning system every single day. The overarching story of planning in this state is government getting in its own way. And the results of this radicalism are all around us. The results are people homeless on the streets, rental inspections with lines wrapped around the block, and median home prices sitting at 9.8 times median income, seventh most expensive in the world. Members of committee, it's simple, making it easier to build homes is an act of good and effective government. There is an old-school conception of government, that it should exist merely as a rule-maker, that you, our elected representatives, should be no more ambitious than a referee tasked with sitting on the sidelines and calling fouls. Occasionally, you might get to add a few new rules, you might get to call a few new fouls. But over time, those rules and fouls add up, and the game will slow to a halt. Well, the housing game has well and truly slowed, and now here we are in this inquiry. There is an antidote to this slowdown. It can be found in a more contemporary conceptualisation of government, that is, the state as an enabler, a government that doesn't settle for merely making rules and calling fouls, but getting off the chair, waxing the court, coordinating the teams and removing the bottlenecks to the action. To wrap up the metaphor, a better government makes a better game. And this starts with the understanding of everyone on the committee and everyone in government on either side, to understand that we need more homes. It then continues to ask, how can you coordinate the population, the individuals, the firms, the institutions, to work together to get these homes built as fast as possible for as many Victorians as possible? The evidence you heard from industry and experts yesterday, from the Property Council to Ahurri, told you that this policy will make the work of building homes easier. That is your role as good government. We at YMB Melbourne believe in a government that does things, that cares about the substance of the outcomes it enables, rather than the rules it writes down, that cares about the number of actual, real homes delivered for actual, real Victorians, so much more than a set of outdated rules created by the last generation of legacy planners. These reforms correct so many of our past errors. This is not deregulation, it is re-regulation. In many ways, a number of these reforms create more rigid and binding rules than those previously on the books, which were fuzzy and discretionary strictures about heights and character that turned planners into a judiciary of vibes, encouraging speculation and horse trading at every stage of the home-building process. Support for these reforms, ladies and gentlemen, is broad. 94% of a representative sample of Australians who were consulted and polled in February of this year indicated that they supported more density around train stations, that they supported more density across our cities. That's a representative sample across demographics, education, states, cities, regions, political parties. It is a much higher standard of consultation than typically takes place within the planning field, which mostly consists of a small huddle of self-selecting individuals who tend to be older and wealthier and whiter than the general Victorian and Australian population. Study after study shows that these are not representative processes, they are biased. They are biased against poorer people, against younger families, against renters, and they are the most important stakeholder in any housing project, which is the people who want to live somewhere but can't, because there simply aren't enough homes. Members of the committee, these are the people for whom these reforms will matter most. These are Victorians whose futures are most at stake. One role of good government is to fight for those who need fighting for. That is also the role of YMB Melbourne, and that is why we are here today. Thank you and I look forward to your questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much, that's a terrific opening to the session. We'll move into questions now. I might kick off. Could I direct to Rob or to Daniel? In terms of the planning scheme amendments that are before us, I don't... There's different views as to how high or how fast these changes should go forward, but this committee is tasked with looking at three specific planning amendments. And I take on board absolutely what you say about the need for housing, particularly in the form of social housing and affordable housing. And by affordable housing, I don't mean the building is marginally cheaper to build, I'm talking about specifically dedicated. Could I ask you, do you see that these amendments, what do they do to actually encourage or require the construction of additional affordable and social housing?
I might start it off and then I might throw it at Dan, but as we said earlier, there are a lot of things involved with housing, it's just not planning, it's just not tactics, it's a whole range of things, right? And goes back to the time issue that I discussed. If interest rates drop tomorrow, demand for housing spikes. But industry can only react through a process that takes time. If we can shorten that time process to allow industry to respond quicker, we stop house prices escalating. And it's all about that demand-supply equation. You know, if you've got 100 houses and you've got 1,000 people wanting to bid for it, you know the price is going to go up. If you've got 1,000 houses with 100 people, the prices aren't going to go up. And it's really as simple as that. So in my view, making things quicker so market can respond quicker will stop pressure on prices going up, or to the different extent if it takes a lot longer, that's my response to that part.
Okay, so can I take you back though to my question?
Yep.
Which is not about simply good old-fashioned Friedmanian economic supply and demand, reducing marginal cost. My question is specifically about dedicated, affordable and social housing for the most disadvantaged. And I'm wondering, in terms of the planning scheme amendments, are you seeing anything in there that will specifically encourage additional dedicated, affordable and social housing?
Because affordable social housing needs a subsidy, so where's it going to come from?
So you think we have to rely on a market mechanism and just a purely a supply and demand equation?
Well, there's a couple of things. One, at the moment, through HAF, whether you believe it or not, they are supplying social affordable housing and the federal government subsidising on behalf of all Australians. Part of what we're doing, which is in the papers, which I didn't want to discuss to distract the issue, is there's a way that we can work collaboratively, right, with local government specifically, because unless we create a subsidy through a density uplift or a carrot, just like Premier Miners is doing in New South Wales, you will never, you'll always be using government funds, whether you're Labor or Liberal, depends on who. It's all about economics, about where's the funding going to come from to actually the subsidy. But by working collaboratively, like the New South Wales is doing, Premier Miners says, "I'll give you 30% extra uplift, you deliver 10% affordable housing." Developer says, "I'm neutral, I can do this, it doesn't cost me anything, because you've given me extra land value with the density." And then you can lock private investment in and unlock it by using what we're suggesting is a digital register to show transparency. That's the only way you're going to get social affordable housing, it has to be subsidised in some way, shape or form. But additional supply, by theory, puts a downward pressure on price. So you need to actually combine both as part of any strategy, in my humble view.
So did you want to add anything?
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I think, to your question, I think these reforms ultimately provide certainty and consistency for the development community to know exactly what the pathway is. I think for too long, in our experiences, it has been, you know, you roll the dice a little bit and you can win sometimes and you can lose other times. So I think that's probably where we're coming to this forum, instead of saying, this can only be a good thing.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Mr Davis?
Couple of things, I just want to start with Rob, just, you're also at Quipex, is it? Yes, correct. It's a consultancy firm? No, no, Quipex is a digital platform, it's about, it's a startup, it's about to start, so it's very different. I was trying to understand what its role is on this. Nothing. Right, okay. And Mr O'Brien's a Labor Party member, I think is correct?
I am a Labor Party member.
Yeah, so my first question to you is, were you consulted, were you consulted about these planning amendments by government prior to their release?
Not on these amendments specifically, no. We found out about, for instance, the walkable catchment zone and so on through leaks from Burundara Council, who sort of in a recalcitrant way leaked those, leaked those as part of the amendments.
What, they might have wanted some consultation with the community, for example?
Let's just have one at a time.
Seriously? Well, I would suggest that leaking confidential documents, that is how we found out. We found out after Burundara Council knew about these amendments, we didn't have any further advance, that's how we found out.
Right. And I want to ask you about GC252, which is a subsequent amendment to these three?
It's not in the terms of reference. Any question on 252 will take on others.
We'll deal with the question of what's in or not.
Yeah, yeah, so it clearly impacts on these amendments and their implementation, so it's clearly relevant to the terms of reference. I just wondered what you know about 252 and whether you have assessed it?
Ethan is best placed to answer this on behalf of YMB Melbourne.
I'm just asking you first, please, excuse me, just let, I'm just asking Mr O'Brien.
Yeah, 252, my understanding is it's the gazettele of the first 10 activity centres, that's right.
And have you examined that in detail?
We've looked at the first 10 activity centres, there was a year-long consultation process.
Have you looked at 252, is my question?
I haven't looked at the exact wording of 252, but I am aware of the activity centre gazettele.
No, so you haven't, thank you. Now, I want to come to Mr Praddlin about tax and some of the other points. Your point about a number of these other matters is, obviously, planning is only one part of housing. Yep. And there's a huge, you know, raft of measures that impact. Yep. One of those is tax. Yep. There's a raft of state government taxes that impact the ability to go forward with development. So even where there are planning approvals, sometimes developments don't go forward. Correct. As you understand, as a former property developer, there are now thousands of permits granted that are not being built. At the moment, correct. Correct. So I want to be very clear here, that the mere change to the planning system will in no way guarantee the movement of development forward. At this current point in time, that is correct. Yep. And I want to ask you about a specific state government tax, the windfall gains tax. Have you looked at that tax and its impact? Yes, in fact, I was part of a earlier consultation process with this, because the principle of the windfall gain tax is actually sound, the implementation is terrible. Correct.
And that it's not archaic.
Well, you know, if you look at the windfall gains tax, right, it is getting, when the state government through a pen increases the land value quite substantially, it should in my view... Through a planning change. Through a planning change, it should at the farmer level capture some of that uplift, because that's the way you can fund things without doing. But it must stay in the local government area that granted that, because if you're a local government councillor, why the hell would you go advance a resounding term as a developer when all of a sudden I was going to provide you a school or a road etcetera? The money goes in the city and you never see it again. It goes into consolidated revenue. Correct. It's just wrong fundamentally, in my view. So stepping away from the city edge matter? Yep. I'm just asking about the large developments in some of the middle suburbs. The windfall gains tax is likely to slow or stall some of those developments? I believe that is the case, because again, I just don't think it's actually correctly implemented, in my view. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr Bachelor?
Thanks very much, Chair. Thank you, witnesses, for coming along today. The committee has got a job to do to provide advice to the Legislative Council on these three planning scheme amendments, two of which are subject to revocation motion, which has been introduced into the Parliament, which would revoke in their entirety all of 256 and 267. What do you think the consequences for the goal of trying to build more homes for people to live in would be if these planning scheme amendments were revoked as proposed by Mr Davis?
There were obviously a lot of statements from the property sector around trust in doing business in Victoria and trust in Victoria's planning system. Look, it's well understood that kind of the uncertainty of the system is a large barrier. You know, Dan McKenna in his former role has experienced this directly in very recent years, and he can speak to that. But the reality is that to have put forth what is a very positive progressive planning change and to then revoke it back immediately, that doesn't do anything for business confidence in this state, it doesn't do anything for residents' confidence in the ability for more homes to be built, it doesn't do any sense that anyone supporting such a revocation would be supporting the development of more homes that Victorians desperately need. You know, it would be a really negative signal on a statewide level.
Robert, what do you think it would do for developers who are trying to build more homes? What impact do you think it would have on their planning?
In my view, and as I said earlier, and this is a non-political statement, I was discussing the same thing with the Labor Party when they were in opposition, same issues were raised that I'm hearing today. It's taken 11 years to get to the crisis point. If we take another 11 years to get it, if there is a change of government, our housing crisis is getting beyond repair. We brought an American professor over to discuss about housing and homelessness and its connection economically. He said, "You've got 20 years before it becomes Seattle," because we're allowing things to be normalised. The issue here, there is no system that's perfect, right? This is not perfect. But time we're saving will save lives out of this. So it is all about supply, it is all about, from a bipartisan point of view, and I've heard references yesterday to the 800,000. I'm all for ambitious targets, but they need to be bipartisan targets. Because if the target, yeah, but, well, let me challenge that.
Excuse me.
Let me challenge that.
Sorry.
Let me challenge that.
Mr Bachelor's got the...
Right. If the target was 100,000 and we achieved it, great. Is that what we need? What's wrong with having a million as a target? Because the strategy you develop as a state, in an ideal world, is bipartisan. If the strategy is a million, you've got to do things very differently than the strategy at 100,000.
So do you think we've got any chance of meeting the need, leaving aside the question of target or not?
I can answer it already, no.
Need?
Absolutely no.
If we revoke these amendments?
Absolutely no. We're already behind the eight ball when it comes to a national level of that 33,000 that no government or opposition has actually even suggested to it. That was a report done by government actuaries on behalf of the federal government that said 45,500 social and affordable homes should be built every year for 20 years, and we're going nowhere near it. Our grandkids are going to be the poorer, because the only is the housing issues, and I've written a few opinion pieces recently, I said, "Stop kidding things, stop the bullshit", right? No one is going to be able to solve today's crisis for today's people. It's going to take 30 to 40 years. But the concern is, if we don't, this social dish... Look, cohesion that's happening in society...
If these amendments are revoked, do you think we're going to go backwards?
I think we're going to go backwards, yes, I do.
Thank you, Mr Bachelor. Dr Mansfield?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your submissions and for appearing today. I'm interested in, I guess, your views. We've heard lots of different evidence, particularly from representatives of the planning sector, and we'll later hear from Mav, as I guess the peak representative body of councils, who are the administrators of the planning system, who raised a number of technical concerns about the specific amendments. And one of the overarching themes is that they felt that they haven't really been engaged enough in developing some of these things to be able to avoid potential unintended consequences of some of these. And I'm just wondering what your view on that sort of collaboration and cooperation with the planning sector and with local government, in an ideal world, what do you think it needs to be if we want to succeed on building more houses?
In an ideal world, we need to collaborate with everybody, because unless you can bring people on the journey and teach them about what they don't know, how the hell are we supposed to understand a sector that they don't have any clue about how it actually affected? This is a community-wide problem, it's an educational problem. And all the councillors I have spoken to since I've left over 10 years ago, when I explain how the development system works, one of them, I specifically remember one councillor down in the South East said, "Oh, I didn't understand that." And yet they're making decisions. We need education, because all the people that are living in the Burundaras of the world, when I educate, when I explain to them what's going to happen to their grandchildren, they are concerned, and rightfully. Everyone's got the right intention, in my view, but you need to understand what the implications are outside of our life, because it is such a long lead time. So yes, there's always ways to improve things, collaboration is the key, patience is the key. Bring people on the journey over a period of time and not just in a short space, once you've realised you've got a crisis on your hands. And that is a collective problem across a whole political system, in my view, not just one party or another. We don't respect that we need to bring people on board.
I think, Jonathan, you referred to maybe some of these people as legacy planners, but I would perhaps put forward that the Mav, you know, they are the contemporary planners, the vast bulk of planners are employed, professional planners are employed in local government. And I think this, you know, that at least the submission reflects a widespread concern about certain aspects of some of these planning scheme amendments. I just get, I guess I'd be interested in your view on that.
Yeah, I think there's a real, like, one of the really big struggles is that local government sort of has to respond to a set of, like, really delicate incentives, right? First and foremost, we've moved to this single-member ward model, so now we have local councillors who are responding to kind of 10,000 voters, which means that, you know, a small number of complaints about a given...
Shocking, democracy.
Excuse me, Mr Davis, please.
That a given...
Uh, that a given.
Please continue.
That a, thank you. Um, that a given, uh, given set of small number of complaints might, uh, represent a large number of the voters. Now, local councillors and local planners respond to that set of localised incentives. There's a real question as to, um, whether that is the best place to have the incentives for, as Rob has been saying, a crisis that actually spans well beyond local government areas, a crisis that actually impacts the entire state and where one council fails to deliver or underdelivers or blocks a given amount of housing, that has flow-on effects, it has spill-over impacts. There is a real question as to where we need to allocate these incentives, um, in order for, um, the housing crisis to be confronted. That's sort of where the locus and the logic, um, that we're seeing in systems like the deemed to comply system, that sort of set a set of rules and do make councils the administrators, but make it very clear that they're responding to statewide rules. And those statewide rules are set at a higher level where the incentives are just much better to make better decisions for housing that affects sort of the entire population. It's not just localised.
Thank you. Mrs. Crozier?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, um, all for being before us. Can I ask you, Mr. O'Brien, do you believe in amenity, community character or the uniqueness of suburbs that are impacted by these activity centres and the right for those residents to have a say?
I believe first and foremost that the amenity of our communities and, uh, the uniqueness of our communities comes from the people who live in them. Um, and the ability for people to live in places allows for greater amount of amenity. It allows a greater, uh, investment in public goods. It allows more families to live in an area. I'll note that a lot of councils that do not deliver housing also have had declining populations of kids and young families. I think that's a big issue. I think that is a huge impact on amenity. I a hundred percent believe in amenity and character. But I believe in amenity and character for spaces that we can share as communities and that we can come together and actually utilise and, you know, it's not.
So they're concerned though that the, the community are raising through the process what the government has done. Do you, I mean, you, you, you're a self-confessed activist for local council. It's all out there in the public domain.
Absolutely.
Um, member of the Labour Party as Mr. Davis has highlighted. So you've got a vested interest in this. Just in relation to residents' rights, communities' rights and the understanding of what the government's changes are. Do you believe that those communities have a right to, to be outspoken and not shut down?
Absolutely. And, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Mr. Palladon, can I ask you as well, do you believe that communities have, uh, that, that, those same rights?
Absolutely. Part of a democracy is, um, David, I've seen.
Great, thank you. Can I also ask you, you, you mentioned tax and you mentioned that that was probably the number one issue from a, you know, perspective, from a developer's perspective. The Property Council, uh, spoke to us yesterday about this and highlighted some of those areas around land tax, stamp duty relief, uh, various ta- tax exemptions and the windfall gains tax that Mr. Davis has discussed with you. Can you just elaborate a little bit more on those, the tax implications that are making it difficult for developers?
Currently.
In relation to, to building in this state?
Very happy to do it. And let's look this over the house and continue because obviously this blip about post-co-med construction costs is only part of a little system. The system has to normalise at some point in time in the future to what the costs are going to be because they're not going to go down, right? So that's going to take time, which means nothing gets built. If government wants to incentivise the private sector to actually build things now and currently the current costs are higher than the markets propensity to pay, you should at least in the short term reduce the taxes until what is remaining is economically viable.
Have you, have you advised government of that?
I've offered my services to both oppositions and, and governments over the years.
Well, we've been in opposition for a decade, but I'm talking about the current government, given that the uplift of increasing tax.
I haven't specifically been asked to, uh, but the offer's there for anyone to use me as a sounding board for, without fear or favour, Italian, exactly like it is in the Development Committee.
But it's a big.
At the moment, absolutely. It's, at the moment, nothing is economically viable. What is, what might be viable are townhouses, maybe? But apartment projects, forget it for a number of years.
Can you just elaborate a little bit? Apartment projects, they're just not viable?
In general, apartment pro- in this port in time, because that will change over time as the market re-normalises. And that's just what's going to happen. That's what's happened the last 20 years. It'll happen the next 20 years.
How can, how can, if it's unviable now, it's unaffordable, isn't it?
Yes. And just think about it. Nothing gets built. Demand keeps on increasing. What's the one thing that'll happen? Prices will rise. Once they pass a threshold where it is economically viable, the private sector will actually build the houses. But is it going to be affordable? No, because they're just going to go one way. This is why we have to increase supply at a whole range of different areas.
So in those different areas, what about in the regions? What about in other areas around, uh, the fringes of Melbourne where there is, you know, people want to live, it's cheaper to build in these areas? What about developing those areas? And I specifically, you know, in some of the regional centres as well.
Regional Australia, Victoria is suffering for key worker accommodation and affordable housing. That is just fact, right?
Should we go there first then?
To be quite frank, we should go everywhere first because it is that critical.
But it can't be done because the costs are too high and the government taxes.
In the short term, but I, I'm also proposing that we extend the urban growth boundaries to include fringe development at the moment because the differential construction costs of a townhouse and apartment are so significantly different. As I said in a recent opinion piece, you can't actually live in a six-square apartment if you're a family.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, Ms. Watts, over to you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for being here today. I, uh, wanted to start off particularly around third-party appeals and where that has led to inequality in supply because of, um, essentially holding up a range of housing, um, projects across the state. Uh, do your organisations believe that third-party appeals are used in a way to minimise the types, a number of people moving into an area firstly? And then what impact is that having on supply?
Yes, that's certainly our view. Um, third-party appeals are used ultimately to stop things from happening rather than to enable things from happening. That is the purpose of these systems, notably within the Victorian planning system, uh, and within the Planning Environment Act. There is no recognition of, uh, submissions to support a development, only recognition within the act to, uh, recognise objections. So when we, uh, rally our members to support new development in areas, we actually have to submit objections and then say upfront, just so you know, this is, uh, a notice of support. And that's because the act exists to stop things from happening in its current form. Um, and third-party appeals are, are a part of that. So yes, it's unquestionable. We, we've obviously run a lot of permit data. Um, we found that, uh, missing middle projects, uh, get the lowest approval rates. We found that the highest approval rates, uh, come from the council of Brimbank at 90%, the lowest approval rate, uh, Bannual at 39%. Um, and that just over 30% of dwelling permits rejected by councils eventually get approved at VCAT.
30%?
Um, yes, on the whole, but then, but then more than two-thirds of the permits rejected by four councils, Glenara, Bayside, Stoddington and Melbourne, are later approved at VCAT. So that's more than two-thirds of those four councils. So this is stochastic, like it's, 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 it's spread noisy data, but on the whole, we are seeing large numbers of, uh, things that get held up in the system ultimately get approved at the judiciary. But our view is that we shouldn't have to go to a judiciary. We should have this simplified system that allows us to get things through faster.
Yeah, perhaps this is, um, for, uh, if you had any other comments on that, but I just wanted to ask, do some suburbs face less challenges? As you've noted, but from a developer community, um, are you finding that there is?
If you do go back to my earlier comment, it's time. Right. If we go through a democratic process where we consult at one point in time, where we go through the strategy, what we need as a society, all that goal, then we agree on a set of rules and to shut, shortcut time because of that analogy about when demand spikes, you need to respond quickly.
Yes.
Then the third-party appeal should have been, we've had your chance, these are the rules, these are, and we need to then let industry respond to those rules.
Yes.
If that makes sense.
Now, we know that, um, what we're looking at here is increasing, uh, supply in, um, a range of existing and established suburbs as outlined in the, um, Plan for Victoria. I'm interested to understand about, um, I've just actually lost my train of thought. Well, we hear lots of demonising of people living in apartments that they are choosing to live lives that are less worthy, uh, in their dog boxes in the sky. Do you think that there is a damage that's being done by public narratives, by public leaders around, um, suitability of apartment living?
I don't think so. I've lived with my family in an apartment and my son was born in one on St Kilda Road, and probably now 30 years ago. So I, I've never had that demonisation. I've never heard it because of costs. For, you buy the same price for a townhouse as a six-square apartment, right? So I'm for the theory of stopping urban growth boundary because we need to consolidate, use our existing infrastructure. But the reality of the market is that delivery systems will give you a different product for the same price. So don't expect a family, as I said earlier, to move into a six-square apartment when they can buy a townhouse on the fringe because it's about family living. And that's something that, it's not a criticism, you just need to understand how the system actually works because otherwise policies don't end up delivering what you're expecting.
So design.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mrs. MacArthur?
All right, thank you, Chair. I just want to go to your comment about normalised.
Yep.
And what we could say in Victoria is that taxes have been normalised here. Uh, there are about 15 taxes on developers, uh, new taxes. Uh, there are 60 overall in this state that have been, uh, imposed on Victorians. Uh, there are, there are numerous charges as well. There's major problems with people like Melbourne Water. Uh, there are cultural heritage assist assessments now that are out of control. These are, these issues are impacting the cost of housing. Almost 50% we learnt in the stamp duty and property tax inquiry i- is taken up by government. Government involved in the system is costing, uh, the, the, uh, house, potential house owners that amount. So why wouldn't you be arguing that we first fix these problems in totally at government's own discretion?
If government was fully informed of the impacts they are having on future societies, they'll fix all of them at the same time. Because taxes are part of the problem. And to be quite honest, it's both respective parties because taxes, that's how you survive and pay for things. But, but the issue is if you increase them above the market's expectation to pay for the product, you stop development dead. And that is what's happening currently in Victoria.
Great. So we, we, on the record, these taxes, charges, regulations are what's stopping development in Victoria.
At this point in time, because this has actually happened for the last 30 years with both sides. So this is something that has to be looked at.
So that's the problem with the housing crisis, isn't it? Uh, uh, the, the, the cost of housing added to the fact that the CMF EU have escalated the cost of doing business in this state to such a point where small, uh, builders and so on can't even get into the market. Many subcontractors have gone to the wall. Uh, so the cost of building and the shortage of supply is also an added feature.
Correct.
So, so investors, developers are taking their money and going interstate because of these impediments to building a house. Would you agree?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, so going to the rental issue, uh, we have 135 regulations impacting a landlord in this state. What we learnt also, uh, in that stamp duty and housing inquiry, the minute I, I, the vacant, uh, house tax came on board, uh, landlords exited the market. So no surprise that there's a shortage of rental housing in this state is there because of government intervention in the market. Would you agree?
All these acrobatic things don't help.
Exactly. So we, we learnt yesterday that this is an experiment. This is a social engineering experiment, oh, on steroids, isn't it?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Well, that's what, that's the evidence we were given yesterday that this is an experiment. Because there's no evidence that this will produce more houses. Certainly, we were absolutely told they will not be cheaper. There will not be affordable or social housing, uh, as a result of these changes to the planning amendments. Would you agree?
This goes back to my point. If this is where we end up and nothing happens, we're just going to get worse. So we have to realise that we have all got a responsibility to the Victorian people. You were charged with the responsibility, go back to parliament with something that says, on value balance of all these objections, we think this is in the best interest of Victorians. And the issue is to single out its point in time. It's unfair to the whole housing system, which has taken, as I said earlier, 30 to 40 years to get here. It'll take 30 to 40 years to get out. But we normalise things. We normalise taxes. A bit of extra tax here, it's not going to make a difference. Well, it does.
Okay, absolutely, it does. Can I, we're running out of time. Uh, we, you said about bringing people on the journey.
Yes.
Would you say that people have been brought along on this journey?
I can't comment specifically other to say that both sides don't bring people, don't bring the Victorian public on the journey for long enough.
It's the government that are implementing the changes we heard before.
Thank you so much.
Nobody is running on the journey.
Sorry, can we have a little bit of order, please? Thank you so much. Mr. MacIntosh?
Hello, I want to thank you for coming today. I'm sorry some members.
I'm sorry for hogging it up, to be honest with you.
No, it's okay. I'm sorry that some members on the committee are excessively loud in the volume of their voice and the way they're trying to communicate with you. Um, I think we acknowledge this is a problem, uh, housing is an issue right around the Western world. And, uh, we know that, uh, we know that such big issues, and this is what I want to come to in this question, it's the big issue of it, uh, are complicated and they require a value set that underpins, uh, policies that form a plan to deal with it. And I will take a parting shot over at that side. We know the Liberals, whether it's, uh, whether it's how we power our nation and our state, they have no plan. Whether it's how we, uh, have the manufacturing ability to manufacture for this, for this state and this nation. Whether it's how we deal with climate change, issues that affect future generations, or indeed whether it's housing, federally and state, they are not able to, uh, develop, uh, and bring to the public a plan. Like, we've heard nothing from a plan today and we won't go going forward.
Okay, hang on a second.
So my, my, my.
Mr. MacIntosh, hang on a second.
Chair, um, I know Mr. MacIntosh hasn't been involved in this inquiry for the last, uh, few days in the hearings and he's trying to make a political. Well, I'd ask him to refrain from making ridiculous political statements and ask the panel.
All right. A bit of order, please. Thank you. I don't think that's a point of order. Thank you. So, excuse me. Excuse me. No, we're just going to get through this and put this done, all right?
So what I want to come to is, um, is what has been referenced a number of times is the big picture of where we end up if we don't tackle housing. And we've, I think you've started to talk about it broadly, but if you can just give us some specific examples in coming decades. Um, we've heard comments around, you know, birth rates and families. Um, you know, I'm interested in ability to, um, ha- house health workforce, aged care workforce, childcare workers. If you can just give us a bit of a glimpse into what the next 10, 20, 30 years looks like if we don't address it from a practical livability sense.
As I said earlier, housing all Australians represents the private sector voice from an economic lens. One of the first things we did, we were formed, we did an economic study for Australia on the long-term cost to our country if we don't supply sufficient housing, which includes affordable housing. The additional cost to the current federal budget would be 25 billion in today's dollars by 2032. My concern is that we won't be able to afford that, so therefore our values get reduced. So this is a fundamental issue. We think housing should be reclassified as fundamental infrastructure for a future prosperous country. Because of that housing, we have unintended human consequences spanning to physical, mental health, family violence, justice, police and long-term welfare dependency. Unless we address this, our country is stuffed. We don't want to become America. We've got 20 years to do it. And this requires leadership at all levels of government to collaborate together, federal and states, in the interest of our grandchildren. We won't be around. But my concern is that we're heading for civil unrest. It is that dire. But because it's being normalised, we're not seeing it. That is my answer to the question.
Thank you.
Yeah, certainly I can echo everything that Rob said. We know that the strongest correlation that we have in studies, uh, for homelessness is, uh, what the absolute rate of rent is at market rents specifically, regardless of how much, uh, how many, uh, sort of subsidies there are. Um, and we know that the number one control on market rents is absolute market supply. Um, the reality of the evidence base is that the best way to confront these chronic problems of homelessness of, um, people not being able to, you know, have a secure place to live and start their, their life journey or continue their life journey after some calamity that was totally unfair and outside of their control. We know that the number one thing to do is to ensure that there are enough homes to go around. That is the number one thing we have to do. These amendments help that and we should be doing everything we can to help solve that problem for the sake of those who need, uh, who are most in need.
And can I just add a little bit more to that? This is, nothing's perfect, right? Nothing's perfect. But what's the consequence of not doing it? That is, and do we wait another 10 years, it gets worse? That's my concern.
Thank you. That's my time, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. MacIntosh. Uh, we've got time for probably a couple of quick questions. Mr. Davis, one question quickly.
My question is first to Rob and then to Jonathan. Um, there are, and you've made the point that this is broader, the need for housing. Um, there are alternate sources of supply. Um, so an example would be Fisherman's Bend. Should that be brought on?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Certainly Fisherman's Bend is one area where development could take place. It's my understanding that there are insurance problems on Fisherman's Bend in terms of getting mortgage insurance, um, because of, because of the flooding risk there, um, is my understanding.
And the second part of my question is some of the costs that are built in. For example, today, there's a, an story in the papers about a 30% premium on building where CFMEU is involved. Is that part of the affordability cost problem? Should that be tackled head on?
That is part of why we're getting a differential delivery system between houses and apartments and that skews what you can deliver.
Does Mr. O'Brien support tackling the CFMEU in this way?
I think we should be, um, looking at how and who is allowed to build and how those, uh, labour costs are, are inflated by whichever stakeholders are. and how those labour costs are inflated by whichever stakeholders are involved.
Thank you.
Ms Watts, do you have another question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I appreciate the opportunity. I actually have a question for Mr McKenna. We haven't had a chance to hear it. If that's all right. Apologies, Rob. I represent the Northern Metropolitan Region, an area that has lots of medium-density housing and affordable housing coming into that area. I'm just wondering if, given your experience both within this role and previously, if you can speak to some of the barriers that have been-
Faced.
Faced.
Yep.
Yeah, in the development of medium-density housing in the sort of inner and middle-ring suburbs. And then in your view about these amendments and if you think that they will in fact deliver more affordable housing as well as medium-density in those inner and middle-ring areas.
Yeah, absolutely. So I've sort of been on a journey for the last 10 to 15 years around that specific area in the North, North West, where, you know, changes needed to happen, old industrial, you know, people leaving, this is where housing needs to be, inner-ring suburbs while serviced by public transport. And yet we still had significant opposition, partly from the community who were, you know, worried about change and worried about the future, but a lot within council as well. And I think, you know, we got a lot of attention, a lot of media at the time in, you know, the things that we were proposing. And the frustrating part for us was we would come back to the same council chambers a year later, three years later, two years later, and it would be different faces and the same questions. And we would have to sort of take people on an education process about what we were trying to do and why this was important. And yet even now in 2025, you know, I'm no longer there, but there's still the same conversations being had about the same issues we were talking about in 2015. So I talked about it in the media a lot of the time, you know, we didn't get permits, we had to go to VCAT. We lose a year. All of a sudden, you know, to take the emotion and frustration out of it, all it did was cost a whole lot more money, which we had to then pass on to the future residents and occupants. So they became less people in their 20s and 30s and more people who could justify those premium costs. The ultimate, the ultimate product was very much the same, but it was just a different cohort who could be housed because we lost 12, 18 months, two years fighting for that best.
And these amendments have passed? What about that?
Yeah, so ultimately it's about clarity. It's about lack of confusion. It's not, you know, we have to fight for this, we have to fight for that. It takes that level of discretion of who you get in front of at a council meeting, who turns up to a council meeting, who's, you know, who's making deals with who. Like, it sort of frustrates the developer when we're trying to do the same thing over and over again. I think in apartment building and in townhouse building, replication is really important and uniformity is really important. And so for us, that's all we're kind of asking for in these, in these reforms is about putting that into the planning system so it takes a whole lot of ambiguity out of the system. And comes back to speed, really.
Dr Mansfield, sorry, we're going to have to, we'll take one last question. Dr Mansfield.
Thank you. Just going back to the idea of collaboration between local and state government. The Victorian Auditor General had made recommendations in two reports in 2008 and 2017 to establish some sort of statewide monitoring, feedback framework to monitor Victorian planning provisions and, you know, I guess provide some sort of oversight. Would you be supportive? That still hasn't been established. The 2017 report was very critical of the fact that it still hadn't been established. Would you be supportive of some sort of body like that being set up to oversee what are quite significant planning changes?
Yeah, I won't talk to the exact model put forth by Vega and these exact amendments, but certainly we at YMB Melbourne have been hugely supportive from day dot on more oversight of the planning system. I think a big problem that we have is that a lot of what happens in the planning system is that plans get made with decades-long horizons and there is actually no monitoring of whether those plans have been successful. There's no regular updating. There's no regular tweaking of reforms. I think reforms that are regularly updated based on the outcomes they generate are better reforms.
Yeah, and to add to that, to shout out Wyndham Council, their Wyndham Plan has a lot of things like that, which is a good example of trying to monitor the outcomes and adjust as the plans move along to see how they manifest in reality. I'm like, that's a great initiative by that council and I applaud them for it. I'd love to see that implemented more broadly because it's a great thing for transparency and to be able to monitor what's happening. And another example from the government is that there was a dataset that monitored all the geospatial outcomes, but it disappeared in 2018 due to a department merging and demerging and all that sort of stuff. And that was a disappointing outcome. A lot of the research that we do and a lot of research that is done will lie in that dataset and anything that's happened since 2018, it's sort of hard to actually say definitively what's happened. And that's a sad thing because we're going to generalise a lot, talk about what we think's happened. We can't talk about what actually happened and it leads to a lot of miscommunication. And it would be great to be able to say definitively what are the geospatial outcomes for these reforms and various other things. I think that's a really important thing. We should definitely support it.
Terrific. Okay, thank you so much. We're going to leave that there now. Could I firstly thank you all for attending today and for the very thoughtful submissions you produced and also your presentation today. It was terrific and we are grateful, given particularly the short notice. Can I just draw to your attention, you will receive some transcript for your review before it's published on our site. And with that, we will now finish this session for about five minutes and then we will be back shortly with the Municipal Association of Victoria.